This conference will now be recorded.
And they recognize that it's not a frequent place of public visiting. But they still have to flag the fact, even though there's a picture that shows the whole flat, smooth parking area, which they also recognize, but because there isn't a handicap space marked out with paint on the ground, it doesn't need to lock. You can park anywhere in there and get out of your car without it being blocked because there are no cars there and no one to block you. And there's a giant bay door and they recognize all this stuff, but basically again at the end, it's like there's no marked parking places. I mean, I'm sorry, but what does that mean? Well, there's no marked parking place, I'll just sit in my car. Who doesn't get out of their car because there isn't a marked parking place?
Yeah. I know. I'm fed up. One last thing I'm just gonna mention, if it's alright with everyone, I say we just reappoint the election workers. As they appointments, they're on the list and we do this February 20th expiration.
What is the, yes, please, let's just do it.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Everybody on the same cycle.
Uh, there's other things to tie you up, we'll have a finalized list next week, hopefully we'll vote on it.
Okay. Thanks for all your work on that. Did I end up sending you guys the final copy of, that I made for the flyer, speaking of finishing work? Okay, I'll send it to you right now. I mean, you may not care, but at least you'll see it and we're just gonna get it printed out and send it with stickers and it'll either work or not, I'll be very, I actually weighed my garbage this week.
The longboard will now be recorded.
You wanna take it as, how much, in two weeks?
Are you, I was just making sure it was working.
Two point seven five pounds that we produced of Venus Basalways in two weeks.
Do you want me, should we just call Jeff and put him on speaker if he's there?
Oh, that's a good idea.
I asked him if he was trying.
He couldn't get on this one either?
He hasn't tried yet.
Oh, okay.
I was just making sure it was working, it was the right one.
Treasurer contract.
Yep.
This is just to figure out what we wanna do, it expires from 30th, last year I think we signed it
We signed it out.
October.
Yeah.
But it'd be nice if we could sign it prior to or not long after July 1. I would like, as I said at last week's meeting, I would like to ditch the seven and a half hour suggestion. I don't know what that would take, if the board's okay with it, I will negotiate that with Sarah. I don't know if there was any other duties or any other part of the contract that anyone felt needs to be reviewed or something.
They did the contract in late summer or the fall.
Yeah.
I read through it and I didn't have a problem with it and even the wording, I have to say that I see your point, but even the wording of the the seven and a half hours. It's ambiguous. It is ambiguous.
It's like, if they did seven and a half hours of work for Monterey, do they have, can they contractually say, we don't have to fulfill our obligations because we did seven and a half hours?
Well, it says on average, which doesn't mean.
Exactly, but that's so vague, what does it mean? If it said we can do seven and a half hours per week, my question would be if they wanna set a limit, let's talk limits, but it means keep in track of your time and then you can produce or report your time when we ask for it. But it says in an average of seven and a half hours, we don't know what it means for the town.
It's not clear contract.
And also, we don't have the means to limit that job to a time limit, really. It just, almost every part of that job description just needs to get done. It can't be, it can't be a limit of time in my opinion, I mean, to some degree maybe, but I'd just like to talk to Sarah and see what we could do.
And I, I think it'd be good to have Roger around the conversation too, just to have two sets of ears listening.
Yeah, I mean, too, if, if we wanna come with a limit, that's, that's fine, but I'd like to see.
I totally see your point, but I just don't know what she's gonna say in return or if she has specific issues that she'd like address, but speaking of which, were there some, some things that you were unhappy with in terms of performance?
Yeah.
Do you wanna, I mean, if you have a list of those and.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we've talked about a lot of them at SLIPOR, but, I mean, debt service has been a pain, retirement funding has been a pain, thankfully, we're in really pretty good places on both. It's just that they've been handled, they've been mishandled. And I don't know the exact division responsibility, there's multiple parties, if you read the contract.
It's unclear for this job.
But if you read the contract about what the treasurer's responsibilities are in the contract, which is why last year we put that where it is, it does, it is related to debt service, it is related to retirement trust fund. And yeah, I mean, it's been difficult and it'd be good if we could put plans in place to make sure that every year debt service comes and goes and is kind of handled in retirement and payroll has been, I mean, payroll, I understand you get a new system, there's gonna be some hiccups. But there were unresolved, unresolved problems for a long time. And like the highway call-in time, I didn't know about until March, but it turns out it's been going on for two years. And we're kind of have a solution, I think it's all pretty much figured out now.
Yeah, yeah, I have the, I have their work, the work that Sarah and Lisa did.
Yeah.
So.
But for a couple of years, highway department people who came into work on call, it wasn't necessarily clear if they were getting paid and they were sometimes getting overpaid and sometimes underpaid, and that is just really problematic.
Yeah.
Um, so it's things like that and.
But it's unclear to me who's responsible for that.
I can see that, I mean, I can see that to, to a degree, but if you go to the treasurer contract, you will find pay over and account for salaries, what you just included payroll, deductions, maintained payroll and personnel records, assured compliance with labor industry cabinet insurance laws. And then when you talk about borrowing and debt service, negotiate all borrowing, prepare necessary documents and notes and report the same to the director of accounts.
Is the rest of the county accountable?
The director of accounts, uh, don't quote me, but I think that you're correct, I remember discussing that when we went over this contract. Pay out, uh, where? And then, I mean, like as far as the special stabilization fund and the OPEB, maintain custody of stabilization funds, pension reserve funds, trust funds, investments in other funds allocated or agency, so. I mean, long story short, I feel like in general, things get done pretty well. There's been a couple of sticking points, there's been a couple of pain points over the past couple of years, I think there's divided responsibilities on many of them. But I wanna make sure that going forward, we are, we have a good contract, we're paying the right amount to really guarantee that payroll, that service.
I mean, and the bottom line maybe that if to get all that stuff done, there need to be more hours, we might need to be paying for more.
Yeah. I'm open to that reality, I just also.
But we want clarity.
I'm seeking, like, no one likes it when we have to come and talk for four SLIPOR meetings in a row and we don't necessarily need to have the cycle level about how the money went into this fund instead of that fund or we realized we didn't pay. Rob, Frank, you weren't around and I forget Susan, if you were on, you maybe were just getting on the board, the year that we didn't pay 20,000 down, that we just, we had 50,000 allocated to pay down a vehicle and we only paid 30,000 down?
I remember hearing about it.
Yeah, and things like that are just, I mean, 20,000 here, 30,000 there, and thankfully, like I said, we're in a good place for the most part, but it's.
Some of the carryovers and a few other things, I don't know if that's, that might be accounted for.
I wouldn't say that's treasurer, I mean, it's the SLIPOR Town Administrator that authorized carryovers.
Right.
Um, but, all that being said, I wanna make sure that going forward, we have the time and resources to handle things effectively and maybe it means more money and I'd like to figure out if so, kind of what that entails.
Um, who's responsible for investing the OPEB money, since it's the interest we're supposed to be using ultimately? There's not, there's no interest unless it's invested.
It's the treasurer, cause they're the, they're the trustee.
And they have to, so they have to.
The treasurer is the trustee, so.
Yeah.
In, in many towns, we, you know, might appoint a trust, the default trustee is the treasurer. In our case, I believe we formalized at a SLIPOR meeting.
I don't remember, but I do, I, I do now recall that I heard that, but I was bringing it up because that's a significant responsibility that seems different from the other treasurer responsibilities, cause choosing an, an investment instrument is not the same as making sure your accounts are in order.
Yeah, I mean, like, like so many of the day-to-day things have really gone pretty smoothly.
Right.
Um, other than payroll. But it's the debt service and the, the other thing that you were mentioning, they come up kind of once they operate in an annual cycle and we just signed a, you know, I can't, I'm not blaming one person, but we just signed that loan for a truck that's not been ordered.
Right.
And like, I dropped the ball there too, but it's, I just wanna figure out what it will take to.
Get it squared away. I know, well.
If it's okay with you all.
No, I don't have a problem.
Oh, we're gonna negotiate it.
I'm just waiting for it to start.
Yeah. And we'll more or less approach it from the angle as long as you get it where we really like, like to renew with you, you know, we more or less think the contract from last year is okay, we'd like to move beyond the seven and a half hour kind of vague suggestion. What kind of, what would that entail on our end? Would it be making a very clear policy about who can contact the treasurer? Which we kind of already have and don't always follow 100%, I'm the biggest offender. But I don't feel like any of the things I bring up to the treasurer are frivolous, they're usually, at least in my opinion, important. They really aren't, it's usually like $30,000 in the wrong place.
It's hard to say, that's not substantive.
So, all that being said, I'm gonna approach it like we wanna renew, what would it take to kind of ditch this seven and a half hour thing? Or if we're gonna keep it, could it be very specific and are you willing to keep track? I assume they probably are to keep track of one way or thing.
Yeah.
But you never know, I like, I'm fine with that too, but it's so vague, I don't like how vague it is in there.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we beat that dead horse.
Oh, yeah. You did.
You guys are gonna have a meeting with her and let us know.
Yeah.
We'll write next.
Frank and Susan, the ambulance contract is also up June 30th. Also, if anyone knows if any other contracts are up June 30th, which I don't think that there are, that we haven't dealt with, we need to deal with those too, but.
We had some proposals we had to put out, right, has that happened?
No, I have to do gravel and heavy equipment.
We thought gravel we weren't doing this year.
No, they changed his mind.
Okay.
Sorry to do that. Uh, they're up soon, but I think we'll be, I think they're up on the 30th, but we'll be okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause at one point Jim was talking about not bidding on gravel at all.
Yes, give us a little year.
Yeah, he was, yeah, he was thinking about buying a whole bunch of it at one point, cause he, he thinks he.
Like stockpiling it.
Yeah.
Under the contract.
Exactly.
Yep, doing that, but he's changed his mind since then, so.
So, I mentioned this before, my fiance's mother's on Southern Berkshire Ambulance, it's after this September, I, a mother-in-law counts as immediate family, cause she works for the ambulance company. That's a conflict of interest and I can't participate on the ambulance contract. And between now and September, it's certainly headed in that direction, I'm gonna reduce myself about the ambulance contract and leave it up to Frank and Susan if they wanna renew that or if they wanna move forward on that.
Well, we already put the amount, from my perspective, we put the amount.
We put the amount over.
And then we had, we had a lot of debate and discussion, the amount is the amount, we don't have an alternative supplier that's reliable and should something occur to change our agreement with somebody, we can knock out of it in 60 days.
Yeah, I think, I want to look, I only had drafts of the contract, I didn't have the final copy.
Let's see what I got. I was reading something.
I think it wasn't adjusted.
Yeah, it was adjusted.
The Saturday, you know?
Yeah.
Ambulance contract, yep. It is in there because I, I have it here. Yep, and it's correct. But importantly, should we, I did ask the fire chief, he didn't have a ton of time, oh, we can do it, but the rough numbers he gave me was that, uh, yeah, time is due. He thinks that they failed to show up for it between six and, like, didn't meet the need for between six and 10 out of about 90 medical problems.
100%.
Which seems kind of inevitable, given how many towns they're serving, right? It's just, it's all a question of are they already out on a call, are they already out doing something? And you know, I don't, I think you heard, did you hear about?
Yeah, I heard, yeah, we've already talked about that on Monday.
It took four different companies before we got somebody, so, um, we can however withdraw, there's quarterly payments, we can withdraw within 60 days, should we find an alternative that we think will better suit us.
Yeah, but we don't have an alternative.
No, we don't. So I, I think we go ahead and issue another new contract with a new amount and that's that. Okay, so I vote that we proceed with a new contract with another year for the agreed-upon amount from their assessment letter.
I was talking about.
Who's in favor?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Chairman broke down.
Nasty voting, so.
I know, right? Wrap that up. Yep, we're done.
So I haven't, so we must, is it a, is it a July 1 contract?
Oh, hang on, I need to dig through.
I can't remember, I was trying to, behind it really quick.
July 1, yeah. This, this was July 1 to September 30 was the first quarter, July 1 day, that's the billing, go up.
Yeah, it started, it was July 1.
Yeah.
Yeah, to June 30. So it'd be July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025.
It's also my understanding, other towns don't have contracts.
Right. They just pay the money and. But.
Will they pay it per call?
No, they paid money. No, we asked for a contract last year because it went from like 5,000 dollars to 100,000.
All, some of the contracts we have is because our financial team refused to write checks without a contract.
But you saw, they showed their financials, you saw their contributions were up. You know, they did, they showed their tax returns in that document.
Their contributions are there billable?
Contributions, donations.
Should I put that on next week's agenda?
What?
Ambulance contract?
Yeah, probably, so we can actually get down.
Like sign ambulance contract or?
Um, well, it's a good question though, because did we generate this contract?
We worked with them, they came in and.
I know, but I'm trying to think, the easiest thing to do would be to take the original contract and change the date.
Work?
Yeah, cause this is.
Oh, yeah, I can do it in Word.
Okay.
Just reuse it again?
Yeah, and just change your dates and the amount.
I know, I didn't work, I only sent you that one, cause that was signed and I need that to track.
They're gonna change the payment dates.
Right, the dates and the, the dates and amounts are what happens.
Special articles, was there any updates from last week or are we all?
Um, I haven't, so I sent, um.
Oh, the.
I sent.
We don't mean those.
Yeah, I sent Sean an email about the fire ones, I have to still double check.
The question about town hall.
Town hall will carry for it, yeah.
Yeah, it will carry for it.
Cause we can spend the money and it's only been there for a year.
So I actually found an email that had an Excel sheet of a bunch of different, and I, I sent it to Roger. There was some like HB, the mini splits were on the list, the floor was on there.
There was, so there was.
We mixed the floor.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I said, not to, but it, that's. Yeah, but the one spreadsheet I had said 30,000 to pay it, it was 65,000.
She had, she had a, she had put in an article specific to the floor, a special article.
No, so the floor also got mixed out of this.
It was an early one, but it was the only one I had.
I think we should review the spreadsheet, but also play it by ear and use it where it's needed. I do know Jim's planning on getting, I think it's the columns, there's more pain to be.
Yeah, like the whole.
We still spent surprisingly little money.
Yeah.
There might, is a boiler on there?
Yeah.
So you'll work with.
There's some issue, there's, there's some issues, there's a bunch of things, mini splits, zones, boiler, or some stuff, but there's a bunch of stuff on it.
I'm not in any rush, as much as we wanna spend these things and get projects done, like we've had for a year, I'm not in any rush. As far as we're, I'm concerned, we'll carry it forward.
Yeah, that's fine, though.
I'm fine carrying forward, I just thought it was a good opportunity to revisit, what were the things we had hoped to get done and when are they going to happen? I, I would be all for having blinds that can go, can close against the light, cause it's not a problem again now, but there was, there was a period of time where you get it right in the eye, you can't see anyway.
It's weird, I don't know.
We could just have a second set, it's a crazy idea, but you know, that's not a problem, cause there's a forge, so.
Alright.
So nothing to follow up on special articles or something.
Um. Retirement benefit, we don't have any update on, that's not urgent, but we need it by November.
The only update I found out was that, remember how we had that conversation about what it said on the other minutes? And we had to move all, no matter what the numbers, that's what they went by.
So they. No.
I know, it's a thing.
Wait, 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 what?
But that's what they, that's what he told me.
Yeah, I don't buy it, so I can go to town council, is that what I need to do?
I don't know, I mean, he could move it back, whatever was supposed to be there, but I'm, I'm pretty certain that's what he said.
I missed something, what is it?
It's, it's really, it's not collating, this goes back to when in the minutes it said, move this plus any interest or any other sum to this account and they, the financial team, the, or any other sum should have been removed by the town board in the making of the minutes. But the financial team read that very liberally to me, and extra $30,000 that you accidentally put in the wrong account.
Yes.
And transferred that $30,000 as well, even though the special article at that same town meeting said very specifically to put into the special stabilization fund.
I think if, I think if the, moving the OPEB money had been before that, it probably would have happened, because they, they kind of went through.
I don't wanna do it, but I can get Donna to weigh in and I think I know what she's gonna say and then we can put that issue to bed.
At the end of the day, let's just get it fixed.
Yeah, but we need to vote in November.
I don't care about the pointy figures or whatever.
Audit, um.
I'm just waiting for an update from them, I'm waiting to get the FY 23 from Scanlon.
Did you ask him about doing the FY?
I haven't, I haven't spoken with him since then yet.
Is it the opinion of the board that we should take the money that we have budgeted for an audit next fiscal year and go back and audit fiscal year 22?
The, the advantage is we, we have then three consecutive years, but then we'd be missing.
The money for fiscal year 24. Unless we could either raise in November or we could raise the next annual town meeting.
I mean, I'd like to see us get every year.
Yeah, I agree.
So, let's, I, I actually asked Tom Scanlon, and he is, he didn't feel we necessarily had to, but if the board wants to, obviously, they, they will. His reasoning was that our financials are actually so good and they were good from the 21, they're good 23. Seeing them as good, so going back to 22 isn't really gonna prove anything unless we just wanna do it for, for what your purposes or something. There are some grants that you have to.
That's, it's strictly because I want us to be eligible grants and you need three consecutive years.
So, yeah, so that, that was his opinion, but like you said, if the board wants to.
Right. I'd like to see us be able to get those grants, because if, if Dennis is saying it makes you competitive for the grants where you're not, if you don't, then plus it gives us the ability to have bonds if we want them.
Yes, so let's just say that the board generally agrees that we'll go back and spend the money that opens up July 1 for the audit, on auditing fiscal year 22, so we keep consecutive. And then if for some reason Scanlon absolutely won't do it, then we won't do it, but let's go with that.
Okay.
Town administrator updates?
Open space recreation plan, we've hit a little bump in the road, because the grant that was used for that is called the, um, a park grant, which stands for Parkland, Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities grant program. So the way that it worked is that they would provide funding for an open source recreation plan, but after the open source recreation plan was completed, it had to be submitted to the organization that is responsible for this. And then you also had to then apply for another grant, that second, to, to, to then get your, to then get your monies for the, for the open space recreation plan project. So the problem is that we don't really have a project, we have something that we're talking with, about Bigwell Park. The other thing about this grant, the park grant, is it's a reimbursement grant, which means we have to essentially pay for it upfront and then they only reimburse anywhere from 52 to 70% and based upon what we've seen online and I think that Seth Jenkins from Berks Regional Planning Commission went and looked, because who Monterey is and what we do, I think goes back to the old EQV, we would only be reimbursed for 52% of the project.
So just for clarification, I got this today from Rob at six o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The project they're talking about in Bigwell Park would be both on the library and in Bigwell Park and the updated budget estimated for project expenses about $6,400, which includes the value of volunteer time and which means, right, that that's not that much out of pocket actually, but that would then, you know, 50% would be $3,200.
Right.
I, the, the requirement didn't say we had to have certain dollar value to that project.
No, no, no dollar value at all, you just have to have a project, and so I think that this is a good opportunity with this project because it's low dollars for getting a big return of, cause we'd be getting $12,000.
Right.
On the open, on the open space recreation plan, cause we have the $3,000 already set aside. So that's kind of the direction that we're going and I think, I talked to Seth and Seth's gonna help do some of the application work and work and help us that way, to go that way, so.
That sounded good to me.
Yep. Yeah, that's good, I'm not just. The other thing is the con, the issue with Conservation Commission where we have had an enforcement order brought against us. I have been in contact with Emily Stockman, who runs Stockman Associates, which we have used in other instances and she was recommended, so I've been, I contacted her and she's normally busy this time of year or through, through till fall, but she does make space here and there for smaller things that came up, she was actually at the location when it happened, so she's familiar with it. And, and, so.
All the stars lined up, huh?
Yeah, she said that it's not that big of a state, big of an area, so she would probably be able to do it. So this afternoon I sent her the enforcement order and asked her to look, she said she'd look at it, be back and touch the thing. So she'll let me know that.
Because part of what we have to determine is whether we had a standing blanket and why.
No, that's something totally different.
Ah, okay.
No, this, this is basically, there's a whole time, timeline, timeframe of when we have to have things done.
We need to hire a consultant.
We have to hire a consultant who has to basically say this is where the problem is, then has to say this is how we're gonna rectify the problem. That problem has to be rectified by a certain date and then we have to review that project over two growth seasons.
So it's not that we didn't have permission initially to do the work, that there was an error made?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
I am actually work, I am actually, I was just talking to Noel, I'm trying to figure out if we have a bundled NOI and if that bundled NOI, which is supposed to cover these things, if it actually includes culvert cleaning because of beavers. So supposedly Jim said we have a bundled NOI, but I don't know where it is, where it stands as to whether it's expired or when it was last done, so we're trying to figure that out. It was suggested that if we don't have, if it isn't part of the, of the bundled NOI, that we actually do another NOI specific to the beavers and culverts and that. of the, um, bundled NOI, that we actually do another NOI specific to the beavers and culverts, and that. So, um, yeah, well.
It's ironic, you can kill the beavers. Be more easily there, kill with the beavers than you can the culverts. You need more permissions to clean the culverts than you do to kill the beavers.
So.
Just ridiculous.
We have, we have two options, if, uh, we need an emergency, so if we knew a big storm, because there's a couple spots, from my understanding and talking to Jim, one of them is, uh, you know, uh, I forget where it was on, may have been Brett.
Brett, right?
One of those, one of those. Where it's, if we did have a heavy rain, it might, um, top over the road. We do have options in emergencies to, um, to, uh, uh, call the, uh, Board of Health. My understanding is that Jim has actually initiated permitting to remove the beavers through the Board of Health. Uh, the other option is through a public safety emergency, which, um, um, and talking to Emily Stockman, she said that may actually be the, um, Highway Director who could do that, which means we would have to declare an emergency, and they would have to say it, and then essentially do the, do the work that needs to be done, and then do, uh, an NOI.
Right.
But that NOI could also be used, from my understanding, as sort of a template for a bundled NOI for some stuff, so. I'm learning more than I really thought I would ever learn about this stuff, so that's what's going on with the ComCup ADA Assessment Draft. Uh, we had a meeting, um, on, uh, Monday, today's Tuesday, right, yesterday, we had a meeting with, uh, Mary May Cuck, Captain Roberts, Bob Carlson, myself, and two people from the Birch Regional Planning Commission, uh, who are, uh, uh, doing this, and, uh, we gave them some informations, uh, some information, they're going to work on a draft, trying to get the draft this week. Um, all comments are just gonna be emailing from now on, they, we, they didn't feel we had, the group didn't feel they had to meet again, in face, face to face. I'm hoping that I can, I'm just gonna have you put it on the agenda, I'm gonna ask you to put it on the agenda, to do, to look at the draft. If I have it, I have it, if I don't, I don't, and so we will look at it then, if, if, if it is available, I'm gonna ask Andy McKeever to be part of the meeting, and just say if you have any comments.
Next week or something?
Next week, yeah.
Does it need a public comment period?
No.
Okay.
No.
That's, that's what I was worried about.
No, no, I, it, it doesn't need a public comment, so.
Mostly what they want us to do is paint lines on parking space.
Yeah, the, the biggest thing on the parks was all just about finding, finding, um, space, the, the park, like making the parking space. There was a couple buildings here, um, there, uh, we talked about a ramp.
I, I actually shot a quick email off to Jim, having read that, to ask what he thinks an estimate would be for putting a ramp at the exit, the entrance that's over at a playground, because the, we keep having issues with the elevator, and putting a ramp there would provide ready access to the building without use of the elevator.
There was, well.
I don't know what it'd cost, but it's, it's, it would be relatively straightforward, as opposed to a lot of other places.
Yeah, so I, um, there was that, there was one other spot, I can't remember what it was, there were some issues that they, they pointed out about the, uh, the D P D garage and all that, and it was like, okay, so.
A lot of them were parking spaces.
Yeah, a lot of them were parking, a lot, a lot of them was parking in that, so that, that's what that is.
And signs, like, how old is the handicap sign of the new setup?
He just did, right, it's three or four years old.
How could it, I think, it, apparently they want us to replace it, because it's faded so much.
Yeah, the parking sign is in bad shape, it's all the parking, yeah, it's like faded.
Wait, like, how long are they supposed to last? More than four years? It's ridiculous.
Yeah, that was what they pointed out.
And they're not cheap.
So that's where that is, um, uh, I did call Karen Allen, left a message, she hasn't called back yet.
Okay.
That's town administrator updates, I do have unanticipated business, if you wanna do that now?
Yeah.
Um, uh, I don't have them here, but, uh, I, I guess because they were donated, you guys need to accept the donation.
For?
Uh, James Theriau and Vicky Russell, um, I don't have their address, where they were, like, Wel- Wel- Weldon?
Wellman Road.
Wellman Road, um, Melanie Officer, uh, Sararo went over there because of a rabid raccoon.
What?
And, um, it was a little bit of, uh, she eventually, you know, got rid of the rabid raccoon, but, um, because of, they were there and saw it, because of that, they donated, I believe it was two catch bowls, and two big, have a heart, uh, cages for, for capture.
Wow.
So, I don't have them here, they're in the police, they're in the police, um, offices, department, so, I don't know.
I'll move to accept the donation in the police department, second, during the discussion, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
And thank you.
Yes, it was, they, they were very happy, Melanie was very happy, um, I also have a police donation from, um, Mickey Jervis, uh, for seventy-five dollars, um, with a note, says, your kindness means the world to you, thank you for going out of your way and service to our community.
Oh.
Um, seventy-five dollars.
Those who accept the donation, please.
Call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thanks, Mickey.
Um, but.
She's not here, Mickey, she's okay.
I know, strange, yeah, the, um, the Renewable Energy Working Group wants to, has asked if, um, they can send the draft of the, of the R F P to town council, please.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, that, was that, I'll ask that, um, the, um, Great Barrington, through the Community Compact, um, a grant process, working with, uh, the Collins Center, which has a shared service division, is looking to get a grant through them to do an analysis using, using, you know, um, their services, uh, with the Collins Center, but they think that it would be better because it's a shared services grant, if multiple towns, they'd really like to have all eighteen towns, or whatever it is in South County, have their name on the grant, grant as well as supporting, and so they've asked the different communities, uh, through the select boards to, um, if they would like to be part of that grant, essentially it means that, it is mo, the grant is really about shared services for EMS ambulance, even though we don't have an ambulance service in Monterey, we could still supply them with data, and show that we are interested, and that we're backing this type of analysis of the region.
We at least know how many medical calls we get.
Yep, so, so that they're just asking.
Yes, the board is in favor.
Yep, and lastly, um, I know I spoke with Justin about this, because he, he was, actually has experience with this, but the, uh, Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board is asking for representation from the town of Monterey. Whether you want to or not, that's entirely up to you, Justin has his, uh, has his experience if he wants to relate that.
With the, with the, for, for regional?
Yeah.
And fit to, I just did their meeting a week ago.
Oh, so you wanna keep going?
It's a B R T A advisory board.
Yeah, I, I, I feel already doing it, yeah.
Alright, Frank, we'll do it, alright, so I'll.
I, I did, I confess, I haven't made every meeting, but I should be sure to be present on the budget.
So I'll fill this out, yeah, put you as, uh, put you as a select board chair, you as the designate, and then it just says executed by, I also wanna sign it, so I can sign it, okay, yeah, alright, that's it for me.
Anything else?
Like, and nothing on your good, you help?
Uh, well, I, um, I sent a, um, I sent the draft to, um, to her, to, to Mary. Uh, she replied back, um, with a couple, with a few questions, which I asked last week, and, uh, which were, um, do, uh, they wanna post it, that they wanna collect the, um, um, re- re- resumes, or do I want to? I told them yes to post, yes on the resumes, but I also, um, you suggested that we might, uh, Frank, you suggested we might wanna put it in the Monterey News, which doesn't come out till July, uh, one, so I was gonna wait a little bit.
Post it, post it, and, and don't wait, yes, we, let's put it this way, I don't think we've had a deluge of applicants for anything we've advertised for, so.
Yeah, alright, I can do that, I'll reach out to her.
Town Charter Committee, that'll be good.
Oh, I, doing that one?
No, we had a lot of applicants.
Uh, yes.
If we had that many applicants, we'd cancel the whole thing. I'm not kidding.
I'm not kidding, because it's pretty much that we're just gonna spend the whole time to tap you. Very partisan applicant. I'm not sure how else I could put that.
Yeah, that's fine, alright, so I'll reach out to her and say to post it as soon as she. And for an extended period, so we can get into the Monterey News, so it'll still be open.
I'm not worried, if we can find a good person, if we find a good person.
Yeah?
Yeah, I've got a good.
It doesn't, it doesn't, Monterey News, it's fine, if it's in time, and if not, it's not.
Yep, and we could send it over to Google Group.
Yeah, I was going to do that, yeah.
Um, okay. We, and we have another meeting with the Fire Department.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, four o'clock, oh, you talked to.
Oh, no, uh, sorry, Thursday, we're meeting with the Fire Department.
Yeah.
On Thursday.
With the whole select board?
No.
Okay, cause I was gonna post it.
Roger, and I know that that can be, just letting you know, they're ongoing conversations, we're working on it.
Um, yeah, I don't know what else.
Alright, minutes, are we doing the, do we wanna do four, eight minutes?
Yes, please, yeah.
Was I, uh, was it okay, was it a little crazy?
No, it was okay, I wrote it back.
Everyone's trying to take on.
Seems like I'm, like, fine.
Always like that. This is weird.
What's that?
Um, I'm just, I don't remember change for the meeting, but.
You didn't, you didn't, it was when I merged the documents.
But he comes up his name. Oh, okay.
It, it, um.
That makes me feel better, but I didn't actually notice anything.
Yeah, it goes weird things when you merge these documents together.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Where are we at? Sixty-four eight.
I'm just trying to find where you, any changes you made, but I haven't found any at all, so maybe.
At the bottom.
Okay.
At the bottom, um.
The very bottom.
Yeah, and I think I had made some other, like, super minor changes, but they got overwritten when I merged the documents. Just don't put it on, no, I.
I didn't, it's, I'm not, it's so frustrating.
I think it's all good. No, yeah, you can do anything.
Oh, just at the bottom, bottom?
Yeah, most of the documents made unanimously, meaning there are seven, eleven seventeen, document used, draft approved by, just to stand.
Okay, yep, yep. Alright.
Are you? I don't have any problems with it, delete, yeah, you said, should we delete that section, I think that, that's fine.
But how much?
Um, the medical rescue vehicle was, you said, not sure what this means, that was kind of complicated, uh, because we had already at that point signed the loan, but we didn't even order the vehicle yet, and we didn't know what to put on the town meeting warrant, and so we were just gonna not put anything for principal, but.
But delete the information is confusing.
Yeah, um, did, well, remove the principal payment related to the medical rescue vehicle.
Right, but it, but what it says here is.
Yeah.
Delete the information.
I understand that, how about everywhere, remove the principal?
Yes, that works fine.
Payment on the medical rescue vehicle, because we don't know when we will get the. I'm hoping.
Oops.
Hey, all the people, meet with Sean, when you meet with Sean, he's gonna go ahead and just worry about it, are you?
We'll, we'll, we can ask him.
Yep, cause the money's available.
I know.
Hundred twenty-nine thousand.
Yep.
Uh, can you happily remember the, um, I, I misspelled the word spreadsheet.
Whereabouts?
Uh, nine hundred, right under delete the information, in that next paragraph.
Oh.
I know, shocking, spreadsheet. And then I, I had another question about deleting a section in that same paragraph, the R M and S P J F on?
Yeah, I'm talking about.
Okay.
That's on the door, and the nine hundreds.
Right.
Sometimes we get caught up when we're talking about minutes or the budget, or the warrant, about kind of format-y things, and I don't know how important those are for public transparency, it's not about substantive issues.
Nothing, I don't think it's important. God, we're all the same.
I was just sort of stuck, like, trying to figure out how to, uh, you know, summarize stock.
Yeah.
It's hard.
Bouncing all over the place.
The good news is, I think it's really good to occasionally do one of these, just remind yourself what I'm involved in doing it, and to really appreciate someone that's done well.
Everybody should do it, too.
I know, some meetings are way easier than other meetings, oh my god. Well, you almost always do get the incredibly difficult ones, isn't it?
Well, you volunteered for the interview.
I know, I did.
See, I was like, okay, I'm gonna do that, I'll make you a cake or something.
Now I'm like.
You do them every week, and you use the YouTube transcript, it's not too bad.
It's not too bad.
Well, also, our meetings now are way less.
Yeah, there's no fault, we, yeah, we have sensitive, real sensitive.
I have, I have a lot of sensitivity.
Because there's two people, so you had to be careful, you wanted to do it right, and.
So I'm gonna move that we approve the minute of four, eight, twenty-four as amended.
I stuck in the motion.
Call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so those are unanimously approved, and I don't think we're gonna get the other ones tonight, unless.
I didn't read them, because I was trying to be a good girl, and not.
Well, so here's the thing.
Yeah?
We have, in some ways, slightly skirted the open meeting law by sending out minutes from one board member to another, but we're just, we're distributing documents for the meeting, and technically, you know, no other board member should look at that uh, dissemination before the meeting itself, but sometimes something out the morning of, or a few hours before, and that being said, we're also against the open meeting law when we have minutes that are older than thirty days old, so, if we're sometimes you're between a rock and a hard place, and you're already against open meeting law, and so looking at minutes outside of a meeting is actually productive to coming into compliance, and the other thing is, at the end of the day, we post every meeting on YouTube, we're not hiding anything.
Yeah, that's why I feel, we have a democracy, right?
It's not legally, that's not a legal requirement, or a legally sufficient, but it is also saying, we're not hiding anything.
So, yeah.
It's all out there.
I just, I just wish that, like.
Not like, listen, eighteen minutes.
I don't know, I wish they would change the rules about jointly editing documents, it would make things so much more efficient, and like, the process itself can be live, right, people could just not have editing privileges, but be able to go on and look at what's going on with the document, see every bit of comments, it doesn't have, it can, it can continue to be transparent, but the law hasn't caught up for the reality.
I think the difficulty too is ninety-nine times out of a hundred is not a big deal, but what happens when?
Yeah.
You have the restaurant making loud noise, and the neighbors, and something happened at the meeting, and a board member rewrites it, and then passes it to another board member, and says, no, this is really what happened at the meeting.
Right. Yeah, no, I'm.
Ninety-nine times out of a hundred, it doesn't matter, and then that one time.
It really pipes into the bite.
I have a question, did, did you vote on, um, actual recording of people being, people having to be in meetings? I was asked actually by the Renewable Energy Working Group, if they could post meetings, or they could have meetings that are one hundred percent remote.
You can.
We, we don't have any.
Both because.
Rules, cause some.
Covid, covid rules still apply, I don't think.
Prior to covid, it's too long, prior to covid, there had to be an in-person quorum, and then covid hit, and they made all the special emergency rules, and it could be a hundred percent remote, and you could do hybrid, but here's how it worked, and you could do in-person, but if you posted in-person meeting, it couldn't be a quorum of remote people, so it was all these rules, and then, every couple months, we get an email from the state that they were extending, and now I don't really know where we're at, other than that, in general, the state's pretty favorable towards remote meetings.
Cause I, I thought I read somewhere where you could vote, you could make a determination, uh, uh, of how those.
I think we did at one point, we, we voted, but I'm not sure if that, we need to be opted or anything, yeah.
The select board, at one point, voted for the whole town.
Yeah.
And we also had a vote at one point about whether or not we were gonna record the meetings, and post the recordings, and we decided to do so.
Yes, because before, when I first got on the board, we actually were meeting entirely remotely because of covid, and then it came back in person, and then we wanted to post them to you, to the website, but the website wouldn't support them, and it was this months-long thing, and it depended who showed up at the meeting, whether people wanted to post them online, and then whether we had permission to create a YouTube account, and it became one of those things, and then we did that, and then Scott, you were fine with that, but then Scott didn't wanna do it, so we got brought up again, and here we are. we did that and then Scott, you were fine with it, but then Scott didn't wanna do it, so we got brought up again and here we are and.
Recording willy-nilly.
Yeah, of course, it's good.
It, it is good.
It's not always pretty, it gets, sometimes I say things that I was like, oh, I shouldn't have said that, but it's transparent, which is good and then people, some people stamp the date on it, because you can still watch all the news.
I'm sure, no.
Yeah.
I mean, and I, I think it's good. Having to, having to deal with the errors you yourself make, sometimes good for us, even if we don't like it. Because I've certainly watched and gone, oh my god. But whatever, at the end of the day, I still think it's good.
Yeah, all right, both should adjourn.
Second.
We'll vote to adjourn.
Yes.
And yes.
Are we meeting next week?
Meeting adjourned at seven thirty-five P M, I think that we really should.
Okay.
I'm gonna be doing a lot of.
That's fine.